Okay. Calling the meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we have Judy Ann, who's going to do the roll call. Thank you, Judy Ann.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Horning?
Here.
Counsel President Frank?
Here.
Counselor Montero?
Present.
Counselor Wright?
Here.
Counselor Phillips? Mayor Barber?
Here.
Counselor Morrissey?
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as circulated. Seconded. Moved and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Tonight, we have a proclamation Veterans Remembrance Day coming up very soon, and I've asked Counselor Steve to read that for us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas on Veterans Day, we pay tribute to the men and women who have risked their lives to preserve the liberty of our nation, the families who support them, and the heroes no longer with us. It is not weapons or technology that develops the most advanced military in the world. It is the unparalleled spirit, skill, and devotion of our troops. And whereas, in an unbroken line of valor stretching across more than two centuries, our veterans have charged into harm's way, sometimes making the ultimate sacrifice to protect the freedoms that have blessed America. Whether active duty, Reserve, or National Guard, they are our nation's finest citizens, and they have shown the heights to which Americans can rise when asked and inspired to do so. Our courageous troops in Iraq, Afghanistan, and around the globe have earned their place alongside previous generations of great Americans serving selflessly tour after tour in conflicts spanning nearly a decade. And whereas, long after leaving the uniform behind, many veterans continue to serve our country as public servants and mentors, parents, and community leaders. They have added proud chapters to the story of America, not only on the battlefield, but also in communities from coast to coast. They have built and shaped our nation, and it is our promise to support our soldiers, sailors, airmen, Marines, and Coast Guardsmen as they return to their homes and families. And whereas, with respect for and in recognition of the contributions our service men and women have made to the cause of peace and freedom around the world, November 11 was set aside as a legal public holiday to honor our nation's veterans. Now therefore, Jay Barber, Mayor Seaside in the state of Oregon, does hereby proclaim November 11, 2020, as Veterans Remembrance Day and encourage all Americans to recognize and remember the valor and sacrifice of our veterans through appropriate public ceremonies and private prayers. And he has signed with the seal of the city of Seaside on the 26th day of October, 2020.
Thank you, Steve. Let's all remember to acknowledge that during the whole month of November, but particularly on the 11th. Just got to note, Kim, that YouTube is not active. I know you'll work on that as we proceed. At this time, I will open the floor for comments from the public. If you have something you want to address the council on that is not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, you can speak then. But if you'd like to address us now, please come to the mic in the back. Give us your name and your address, and limit your comments to four minutes. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. Hello, my name is Linda Isles Martin. I live at 34112 Highway 26, Seaside, Oregon. I'm a business owner here in town. I've lived here for quite a while, and I own Linda's Rag &amp; Bone, a secondhand store on 101 and 7th. And this time of year, I'm always thinking about this issue, and I just received all my tax bills. I've lived here for a while, and I'm lucky enough to have been able to buy a few pieces of property. And so this time of year, I look over my tax forms and I see how much money I'm paying to the city of Seaside and the county of Klatzup. Yet because I live a few miles outside of the urban growth boundary, I'm not allowed to vote for any of the Seaside issues, like for the mayor, or the council members, or whatever else is going on in downtown. And so I don't think that's fair. And I'm here to ask how I can go about changing that. Because I live in Seaside, my ZIP code is 97138, and I feel I should be represented in the city's voting issues. I recently became an American citizen, even though I've lived here for quite a while. And I had to review my history lessons to pass the test. And I feel like I am being taxed without representation, and I feel that that's against our Constitution. And so I would like to have some advice from you guys as to how I can go about having this issue fixed, for myself anyways. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Linda, and welcome to your citizenship.
Thank you very much.
I do not know the answer to your question, but we'll ask our city attorney to research that. How are the regulations regarding who can vote? How are those established? Do we establish them, or are they established broader? We'll work on that. Okay. Thank you, Linda. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Hearing none, I will close the public hearings and then ask the council if anyone needs to declare a potential conflict of interest on anything on the agenda tonight.
No, sir.
Hearing none, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. No reports or presentations tonight. We do have unfinished business. We have some vacancies on committees, boards, and commissions. The Parks Advisory Committee has, is it one or two openings?
Two, or one.
One.
Two for the Tree Board.
Yeah, yeah. And two for the Tree Board, and we have an application for the Tree Board.
We have two.
Do we have two?
We have two.
I'm behind time.
I'd be happy to nominate Julia Weinberg and Dan Stark to the Tree Board. And set up interviews.
Okay. That's the nomination that's moved and seconded for both of the applicants. Any further discussion on that? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. We'll need to set an interview maybe prior to our next council meeting.
We have one for Parks Advisory. I may not get the name right, but I'll try my best. Daphne Mejia Alvarez. For Parks. I'd nominate her.
Okay.
Do the same.
Okay, for Daphne. Was there a second?
Second.
Second for that? Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that? Those in favor of that nomination say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Hopefully, we can do that interview. We may have to come pretty early to the next meeting, but we'll try to get all those done.
Can I make a point of order?
Yes.
We're still not public online. We're still not on YouTube. Is it being recorded so those people who aren't able to watch would be able to get the recording? Thank you.
Regarding the Transportation Advisory Commission and Planning Commission, we still have openings there. And please get the word out. We want those committees and commissions to be fully populated. Did we vote on that last nomination?
We did.
Yeah, okay. Okay, under new business, regarding the public hearing continuation, the Transportation Advisory Commission recommendation eliminating street parking on Sunset Boulevard, the specific area. We did have a public hearing at our last meeting, continued that. And so at this point, I'll open the floor to the continuation of that hearing. If you haven't spoken to this in the past and would like to speak to it tonight, you're welcome to come to the mic and introduce yourself. Anyone would like to speak regarding the elimination of street parking on Sunset Boulevard? Seeing none, hearing none, I will close the public hearing at this time and then ask the council for comments. Any comments?
Well, you pretty much heard mine last week. I'm all in favor of this. And I think of all the input that I've listened to, I heard no negative about having that non-parking. So it looks like it's a favorable thing. Everybody agrees on.
Yeah. Everybody that I've talked to that lives in that area are very supportive of this.
I think the overarching thing to look at is it's a safety measure. It's a, it's a, yeah, it's for the safety of the people who live in the area, drive in the area, walk in the area. And I think we have to really pay attention to that.
It would be great if someday we can actually get sidewalks in there. But, you know, for bikes and people walking, that's just a really bad area if there's anybody parked there. I mean, even with nobody parked there, it's still kind of scary.
Yeah.
Walking along there.
More sidewalks are going in to the east of that, and that'll help one a day. Yeah, yeah. Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion to read by title only.
So moved.
I'll second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That motion carries. Ann?
What am I to read?
Yeah, if someone's wondering.
Item 11, new business.
11, hang.
There isn't really.
Oh, oh, sorry.
We're just approving what the Transportation Advisory.
I'm sorry, Dan. I threw you a curveball.
No, that's okay.
I was thinking.
Somebody throws me a curveball.
Well, we're all awake, for sure. Okay, all I need to do is entertain a motion in favor or opposed.
Once again, so moved.
Okay.
Wait a minute. You said a motion in favor or opposed. He can't so move because we don't know which way he went.
I think he's moving that we approve.
Yeah, but you gotta say it.
Thank you very much for pointing that out.
We assumed that, but.
All right.
Okay. So that's for in favor. Is there a second?
Yes.
Yeah, second. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Russ Vanderburg, regarding the rental rates changes at the convention center.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry. It is recording, just so you know, but there's something going on with YouTube. And so like John said, we can upload it tomorrow, and they'll be able to watch it later. But I am doing everything I can. I just don't know why YouTube's not picking it up tonight.
Well, thank you for trying.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. So the reason I'm here this evening is to ask for an approval of a rate structure that will go into effect January 1st of 2021 and will establish a reservation rental structure from December, I'm sorry, from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2035. And that allows us to maintain a 10-year window of scheduling. So as it stands now, if somebody were to call me and want to reserve the convention center in February of 2031, I don't have rates established. So this will establish a five-year moving forward. And each year concurrently, I will have the ability to book it, you know, in 2032, 2033, up to 2035. And we do get reservations that far in advance of annual groups that want to maintain their position within a certain period of time in the year. So we do write contracts that far out. So there has been a couple other small adjustments, but they were based on the value of the changes that were made during the renovation. Very minor, but they did make some small adjustments into the Riverside rooms and the Sunset room. But everything else was as approved last March, when I came here and made the majority of the changes. So this basically just establishes the rates through 2035.
So I have a question, Russ. These aren't necessarily locked into today's rates. Do they graduate through those years?
They do, yeah.
Are they tied into something?
It's basically, it doesn't have an index that it's tied into, yeah.
Okay.
It's, each five-year period has a different rate.
Okay.
It's just based on, you know, some inflationary anticipations. You know, we got supplies, utilities, maintenance, you know, salary changes every year. So it basically gives us a template to use. And unfortunately, you know, we're, we're, our rates must be competitive with other venues throughout the state. And a lot of the information that we receive from our clients keep us informed because a lot of rates are not public, just as well as, we don't post ours on the internet. We don't post them on our website. Obviously, clients share information with each other, and that's where we generally get our comparative, is from our clients that use other facilities around the state. And we are very competitive when it comes to our competition.
That's the question that I was going to be asking, is how do we compare to our closest competition, either, not just closest geographically, but closest in the size and the kind of conferences that are held?
Well, each venue has its own situation that they have to deal with. Some venues, well, we don't compare, you know, basically, our competition comes from the River House, Salem are two of our main, we don't compare to the Oregon Convention Center, but we certainly have in size. But everybody has their own challenges as well. You know, being on the coast has a huge advantage, but it also has a disadvantage of people driving over the mountain during the winter months. We have a much better district for hotels and shopping where the other venues are closer to the airports. So each venue, you know, you really can't compare just apples to apples. So our structure has worked well for us, and our motto is we never lose a piece of business because of price. If we find occasionally we are negotiable, if the piece of business is worthy of perhaps an additional discount, rarely does that occur, but some promoters will shop.
Oh, sure.
And they do like to, another thing is, we don't charge for individual miscellaneous items like microphones and lighting systems. Other venues do charge for those, you know, pieces of equipment. Some venues charge for chairs, believe it or not.
Basically, we're not nickel and diming them.
We don't nickel and dime.
Yeah, that's good.
So is it an industry standard that you try to do your pricing in five-year groupings?
Well, each venue is different, of course. Some, for instance, the River House is not publicly owned. It's a privately owned facility.
Yeah.
And they can charge, basically, they can negotiate.
What the market will bear.
And they sell their rooms in conjunction with that. Salem is probably a little more city municipality type of a structure. But other, all venues are different. Some venues charge per square foot, others charge by the room. We charge by the room, or complete all venue as a package. So there really isn't a standard, if you will.
Yeah.
I noticed that the commission has supported you in this direction as well.
Yeah.
That's important.
It's been discussed, and we've, you know, talked through this on occasions. And at the meeting, I think I indicated it was unanimous that they approved it.
Right.
On the 10th, yeah.
Well, you know, it certainly makes sense that if somebody is approaching you all to schedule, that you be able to tell them what the price will be so that you can start talking about it.
Right.
And of course, they want to be looking at it from the perspective of their budget.
Right.
And so I think knowing the price is out that far is really good.
It is. Because, you know, like you said, clients need to know what their price is going to be, and they won't sign a blank contract. And they're not going to, you know, what the price might be. They need to know what it is.
Exactly.
And then we obviously, you know, honor that regardless of what cost factors may look like in 2031. But we've used this, we've used this for now, for some time, and it's worked very well for us.
Good, good. Other questions, Russ?
Nope.
Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the new schedule.
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Thank you, Russ. So we have some dirty police headquarters that we need to talk about. Chief, you want to come and talk to us about this, the need for a new contract?
How about we give them some mops and aprons?
Hi, good evening, everybody. So we received a couple of bids on this, and the heartburn I'm kind of having with is just the increase in pricing. We were, it's got to be about a three or 300 plus, and then about a $600 or $700 increase in bids compared to what we've been seeing. So I kind of want to take a little bit more time just to maybe try and get some information as to whether this is just more realistic of a price to get the work done, or if these are just a little bit more inflated, for whatever reason. But I just don't feel comfortable that we're wanting to increase it that much compared to our last service. So right now, we're still able to take care of it on our own with our staff, and everybody just kind of pitches in three days a week and, you know, cleans her up and wipes everything down. And with COVID, we've been wiping everything down anyway pretty regularly. So it's just a little added chore for us down the road as we get a community service officer. This may just be one of those tasks that we kind of roll into that particular position. But right now, I just don't feel comfortable with this. I want to kind of take a look at some.
So I've got some questions about it.
Try and answer them.
I totally appreciate the sticker shock to you. And I totally appreciate you wanting to save the city money. But I'm also concerned about asking our, I'm going to call it our professional staff, our dispatchers, our police, to do something that is, that is not part of their job description and that may take them away from performing the duties in their job description. And those are public safety duties, which are, in my mind, very important. So I understand that the price before was something like 750 a month.
Maybe a little more than that.
A little more.
I should have 900 as the.
And I don't know whether these, these two firms are local. I don't know if there are concerns about other things besides the price. There might be, and I can understand that. But at some point, you know, I'm looking at the reasonableness and in this day and age, what people are paid. And I don't know what's in the RFP, so I'm not talking from, you know, I know I'm talking sort of off the top of my hat. But I would, I would, I would support you in not letting this go too long. And I would support you in paying more than we've paid in the past, given, I don't know how long ago the contract was let to begin with. But when I think of the building, the Police Department building, and the fact that people have to be bonded, or, you know, they have to be able to work in that environment, and the confidentiality, et cetera, I would expect to pay more. So I would support you in that.
Good. Thank you, Tita. Any other comments?
Nope.
Basically, I think we want to hear from you as soon as possible to see if you can improve the price, but it really ultimately is your recommendation that I'm wanting to hear.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. A motion on the floor to reject this bid, is that required? Okay. I'll entertain that motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to reject the two bids that were received for the cleaning of the Police Department facility. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Okay, and then, we discussed briefly at our last meeting a policy regarding the changes of membership, or temporary changes in membership for committees and commissions. You have a proposal in your packet, but we've had an updated one from Tita that refines it a bit. I'll entertain a motion to put one of these on the table.
Well, obviously, I'm going to move to put the updated statement, policy statement that I submitted
To read that.
For our consideration. I'll read it. "An appointed member of any city of Seaside committee, commissioner, or board who moves outside of the geographical limits required by the rules governing appointment to the body on which they sit, but is actively searching for a residence within the geographical limits, may continue to serve on said body in good faith for a maximum of six months from the date of relocation outside the boundary or until relocation outside the geographic boundary is considered permanent, whichever date occurs chronologically first. The date six months after the original move, or if earlier, of permanent relocation decision, would be considered the date of resignation."
Okay, that's a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. I think it defines it a little better.
Yeah. I like it. Moved and seconded. Thank you, Randy. Any further comments or amendments, or?
The only thing I would have said was, it'd been pretty easy just to remove the specific detail out of the original statement by just not saying, by either moving out of the city or the urban growth boundary. And then you had a very simple statement. This, other ones longer, but it works just as well.
It does, yeah. Okay. No further discussion. I'll entertain a motion to approve this policy. And it's a policy, not an ordinance. And there is some leeway when you have a policy to consider extenuating circumstances and so forth. Somebody might have a residence coming, closing into seven months after they're gone, but we know it's closing. We have some flexibility, that sort of thing. We're really wanting to keep good volunteers on our commissions, committees, and boards, if at all possible. And right now, there's a lot of transit movement going on in the city, and housing is hard to come by in the city right now, I know.
If I could make a comment on that, I think a key to all of this is good communication between our committee, commission, and board members with city staff. Because sometimes I know city staff finds it difficult to track where people are. And so communication is the key to all of this.
Yeah, good point. So the policy's on the table. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. My motion carries.
I have one follow-up. We have a counselor's handbook, I believe, with. We have a counselor's handbook, I believe what it's called, but I'm just curious where this policy's going to end up so anybody can look at it.
That's a good question.
Everybody's looking at Kim.
You work on that, yeah.
In the handbook.
In the handbook?
You know, I.
Which hasn't been updated in forever. There's a lot of stuff that's outdated, so maybe that's something we put on our goal setting when we do it next year.
I also think that anybody who is named to a board, commission, or committee should know this policy. So in whatever packet we give them, we should be including this so that they know what the expectation is also.
Good point. Good, okay. We've come to the close of our business agenda. Comments from the city staff? Dale, why don't you talk to us? Our Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you and council for your work on the Sunset Boulevard parking issue. I'm sure the neighbors, the walkers, will all be very pleased when I let them know. Some of the things you, as you know, our weather's very nice. We're still out mowing lawns, which this time of year is supposed to slow down. It hasn't yet. Town's been very busy, so we've been busy in town. And I was thinking this weekend, right after the next council meeting, within a week, we start putting up holiday lights.
Oh, my gosh.
That's a reality check. So things are going very well.
Good, good. Thank you, Dale. Chief, any further contributions?
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of notes. One is that we've been working hard with some promotions going around the department due to the retirement Lieutenant Holt and some jockeying of some positions. I'll be ready to announce and hopefully do some public display of recognition here soon to let you know how those went out. But we really appreciate any counselors and some of the public that helped with both the lieutenant selection and the sergeant selections in the last past several weeks here. This week, we started back with one of our recruits just graduated the academy on Thursday. So we have TJ White on the road, and we're excited to have him back. This was one of the classes that had not a whole lot of pomp and circumstance with their graduation. Their own families weren't even allowed to attend those things. So they had their graduation Thursday amongst themselves, and then next thing you know, he was back to work for us. So just a couple of things to let you know what's happening over there.
Good. Thank you. Russ?
We have, the SDDA will be on our facility on Thursday morning, 8:30, open to the public. And we also have a new event coming into town this weekend called the Seaside Saturday Market. They're going to be with us every Saturday through the end of the year.
Oh, good, good. Mark, you've been very quiet tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I did, I promised that I would not say a lot tonight. I don't have anything really on the agenda, but I will remind the council that you've been asked about a workshop for homelessness. And I believe that the date that you have come up with is November 6th.
That's right.
At 5 o'clock.
That's right. So that note, thank you, Kim, for that notice today. Okay?
And we're going to distribute information about that to get as much involvement and interest, right?
As far as I, whatever it is that you would like to get out.
I think Kim is inviting public comment in writing prior to the meeting so that we have that in, anything that we hear, so that we have that before the meeting, if possible. Yeah, good, yeah. Dan Van Thiel, any comments this evening?
Nope, glad to be here. Beautiful weather.
Glad you made it safely. Judy Anne, it's nice to have you with us tonight. Thanks for standing in. Kim, any comments? I'm on the end.
Dan said it well. Good weather.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe clam digging still is possible.
Yeah, it's good weather, but it is chilly out there.
It's cold. It starts bracing a person.
Yeah.
You know you've made it when you can make it through a 25-degree weather and a dozen clams.
Yeah, that's right. That's good. I love it. Yeah, good. Steve, on the other end?
Let your voice be heard, number one, by voting. I just looked up before I came over here, and 50.12% of Klatzup County has already turned in their ballots.
Wow.
So that means the other 49.88 of you need to get going. And the second V would be volunteer. We still have some openings. And then as my prom reminder, prom anniversary reminder, 100th anniversary, over the last two weeks, I've noticed the annual fall return of our woolly bear caterpillars and got to thinking that as I walk the prom, that means they've probably been doing it for 99 years. Next year will be their 100th anniversary as well.
Celebrate them. Yeah, love it.
Thank you.
Good. Tita?
You know, I don't really have anything.
Nothing tonight? Okay, thank you. Randy?
No, I agree. It's been nice to have good weather. I've had, I've been able to play pickleball and tennis outside the last two days, and I'm grateful for that. And just enjoying not completely October as far as the amount of people in town because I think we have more than usual. Maybe it's due to the weather, maybe it's due to other things, but it's been really nice. That's it.
Good. I didn't bring a quote tonight. I just have three words I want to leave you with tonight. Vote, vote, vote. We're adjourned.
There's a ballot box right out there.